Can I ask who's on the call, please?
Larry.
Okay.
Matt.
Thank you.
Pete.
Okay, Pete.
Joanna, Tina, or what?
Tina.
Trisha, okay.
Trisha.
Nancy.
Gotcha. Nancy.
Tina.
Elcadino.
Okay, John. I got Tina.
Roger Hamel.
Okay, Roger.
Mike, somebody's here.
Mike, could you spell your last name?
K E W E T T.
Are you, are you here as a, um, as a resident?
Thanks, the police chief. We'll introduce you sometime, Diane.
What did, oh, I'm sorry, Mike. I didn't understand your last, I didn't hear it correctly. I apologize.
They forget quickly when they don't see you after that.
That's true. I'm sorry, Mike. Hi, Terry.
Hi, Diane. Hi.
We're good.
Diane, did you get Tina?
Yes, I did. Three times now.
I'm going to go on here right now.
Okay, so Matt, we only have you and Larry right now.
Oh, really? Okay. No, you have me, not Larry. Oh, Charlie's here.
Charlie's here? Okay. All right.
Oh, yeah.
All right, so, um, is Trish on?
Yes, Trish is on.
Uh, okay, I'm gonna call the meeting to order. It looks like at six o'clock exactly. And, uh, no pledgeable agents, because that'd be weird during this length. But, uh, the, uh, we'll start with Trish. Trish, if you could give us the latest update, I'm sure you have quite a bit the last couple of days.
Absolutely. Okay, so our, yesterday, we had a legal call, um, so I'll run down that. There were a few things, um, that were specific to communities. So I'm not gonna say the people's names. Do you hear me?
Yes.
Yep, of course. Okay, I, I, I heard a lot of noise. Um, so one of the things was a question about campgrounds. They have campgrounds that are starting to open, uh, just this week or by next week. Uh, they're wanting to know if they can restrict campers and RVs, and can, they tell them that they can't be gathering. Um, if something could be developed as a package for campus, could that be done? Uh, Melissa from Department of Health responded and said they will look for guidance in helping everyone that has campgrounds in their community, and public health will produce something. So I suppose that's pertinent to our town. Another town talked about, they have already, the tax collector has already started the lien process, and that due to lien properties on April ninth, is this on hold? And the answer was at the present time, they are not advising towns to change their processes. So these methods and deadlines should be followed, unless a future decision is made that affects these tax projects. They went on to say most municipality tax collectors already know who is not able to make tax payments in time in order to avoid tax proceedings. So the procedures for taxpayers should complete, that express should apply. And a conversation should be had between the tax collection, tax collector, sorry, and the Board of Selectmen, and it probably would be in non-public. I did call Mary Jo, Mary Jo, to give her this information. She said to let you know, although she's not on the call, uh, they got a notice and memo from the tax collector's attorney. So she knows exactly what she's supposed to be doing. Um, so if she contacts the selectmen, she may forward you that memo from the attorney. Uh, there was another town that had a problem where religious organizations are refusing to comply with the number of people allowed to gather. They wanted to know, what should we do? The answer was the guidance is coming out shortly, and this question may be asked on the law enforcement call answered, on the law enforcement call. However, the restriction to fifty people did not violate any religious orders. And so the ten, um, the ten people order also does not violate anything. Um, there's law enforcement coverage for claims based on a violation of religion. So if law enforcement officer had to, um, get involved, there is coverage on that. Somebody else got on the call and wanted to know that hair salons and barber shops and gyms in their particular town are continuing to operate, and said that there's been no direct order yet to tell them to close. It's not gonna be coming. And the answer is yes, this is being considered, but we're unsure if the answer at this time. Now, understand, this was yesterday's call, so clearly things changed today. Um, there was a, uh, one of the fire departments said, um, there's a protocol for destination determination. And if a patient meets the category that does not need to go to the hospital, but the patient still wants to go to the hospital, they ask what to do. The answer was protocol is that if the patient, it's in the patient and the public's best interest to follow what the protocol is. If they have been evaluated, evaluated by EMS personnel and are meeting the DHAS and DPS home requirements, um, then they don't get transported. Uh, as things ramp up and hospitals are busy, the department practice will need to dictate whether or not they're gonna head to the hospital. But the way the protocol is written, you have the authority to deny transportation, or they could go in their own private vehicle if necessary. And the person, I believe it was the fire chief, that asked for this, um, how to handle this, said, if you want to tell us that we're not gonna transport, we want this in writing. So I can't understand why he wants that. Uh, another call said that, um, similar to the previous question about transport or not transport, can protocol be taken a step farther? Um, if local resources are strained and EMS agencies are not gonna transport those who do not meet the requirements, can this actually be in order? So again, they're looking for stuff to be in writing, and their answer was, of course, we'll look into this. Um, there was another town that says, working through logistics of local government meetings, and having been successful in holding meetings under ten at this point, but a lot of residents wanted to do video chat or teleconference. They happened to find a vendor that can take up to twenty people on a teleconference or video chat, um, within their financial means. And they wanted to hold these types of meetings using this software. But their question is, if they get over a hundred attendees, can they legally close the meeting because they're unable to meet the public needs, or can they postpone it? And the answer was, you are fine with stopping the meeting and reschedule it to a further date to meet the technological needs. And this is the method they prefer, because they want the public to have the right to meeting. Um, another town, and this is not new, you've heard this in other calls, wanted to know about the release of addresses. Um, municipalities wanna know if there's a certain area that has some infected people or symptomatic people, they wanna know. Um, and the answer is, they're looking to it, they're looking into it. Um, they said it's very complicated to protect the public and yet let our first responders know where there's areas of concern. And we get this question on every single call, so I'm sure eventually they're gonna give us something. Uh, there's also a question on, um, town meetings and the legalities of town meetings. They're actually gonna schedule a call specific to town meetings, and we'll know when that is. Uh, it's sometime next week, I'm not sure when. Uh, another town said some religious organizations decided that they're gonna have their meetings in parking lots so that people can just stay in their vehicle and ask, is this acceptable? And their answer was, this still could violate the order, as there are other options for them to communicate online, which would not violate the order. Um, and they did remind these people, this is a slippery slope. Um, there was another decision, uh, I mean, another question on, is there, and this kicked from the fire department, is there any decision that's been made regarding part-time employees being able to go over thirty-two hours? And the answer is, the Hampshire Municipal Association is gonna talk about this in regard to waivers and migrant from, uh, municipal association will do some research and get back to us on that. Um, there was talk about what to do about required mechanical inspections and state mandated oil inspections, is there a requirement to get it done or not done? And the answer was, they didn't think so, but they were gonna run it by the chief mechanical inspector. They've looked into issues relevant to building and fire codes and have asked, um, for an executive order of what the town should do if the town hall was closed and permits can't be obtained. Uh, another, another, this was an EMS, said that in some areas, they are specifically hospitals are specifically asking about involuntary DNIs on patients, and asked to keep this in mind for the future. And the answer was, some ERs are thinking about not working on COVID patients because of the amount of doctors that are exposed to this, and it's being worked on internally in the state. Physicians and practices will receive guidance and from ethics perspective, which will include first responders, nurses, et cetera. And as it gets notified, they said they'll send it out. Um, there was another, uh, comment about other campgrounds. They weren't really campgrounds, but they're called little communities. They're starting to fill up fast. They're coming from other states and they're concerned. And the comment back, the answer back was, this is a public health question, and call public health to weigh in on it when you're talking about buildings and residences where people gather, um, and their families. If there's large families, like over ten, you can't specifically say you can't get together. Uh, Melissa from, I think she's from the Attorney General's Office, I think from the Health Department, she's gonna get guidance for this and will get back to us. Uh, let's see, is that, uh, let's see. Uh, okay, so that was, that's it for yesterday. That was the legal call. Uh, today's call, this is an emergency management call. So they would talk about surge planning with hospitals and funding, who is funding a surge facility? Um, and surge, I, I, I think that's the acronym for Management Systems for Large Scale Emergencies. And they're looking at, you know, how this is gonna be funded. And they did say they're working through a plan right now. Um, and they had the same answer with homeless populations. They're also working for a plan for homeless populations. They reminded us that there was a very important law enforcement only call at two thirty today, and wanted to make sure that we let, uh, uh, police chief know that something was gonna, gonna come out shortly before the call that was important pertaining to the call, and we did confirm with Chief Jewitt. Um, and that is obviously about the, you know, safe and stay-at-home order and discretion to the police officers versus mandatory. And from what I understand, it was a fabulous call. Uh, there was also questions again about PPEs. It's an issue for everyone. We're wanting to know, when are we gonna get more? Uh, they're, they're requisitioning these things quickly, but we're not getting anything. And they reminded us that if we had an order that was still partially, they now don't have the capacity to go back and complete our partial order, so they want us to reorder. Which, uh, Larry did yesterday, so we did reorder, um, for freeze fire, uh, transfer station, whatever we think it might be. So we did do that. Um, there was a question about homemade face masks. CDC recommends homemade face masks as a last resort only, and we need to send that message out. They also wanted data of positive patients that are being pushed out through nine-one-one. It's still in progress. We're trying to work through this, but again, we're not being told when somebody tests positive at a hospital, it's not coming back to police and fire. Uh, there was another question about town mail. There was a particular town that said, you know, do we need to be concerned about opening mail? Is there guidance about sanitizing mail? And they said the, um, they're gonna put something together and send it out to us soon. Hopefully, we'll get that next week. Uh, another question was, is the declaration inclusive of crisis counseling under the Stanford Act? And currently, the emergency declaration does not cover this, but they're drafting a major declaration that will cover counseling. Uh, they're, they're asking about an update on increased wide available testing, and again, they're working on it. Um, there's a bunch of kind of trigger points that, that is dictating whether or not they're gonna be able to do this. Um, another question on HIPAA, we know there are twenty, this particular person said there's twenty cases in Hillsborough. If we don't know where these infected people are, how are we not supposed to use PPEs on every single call? They can tell us there's certain protocol, when to use it, when not to use it. But if you're not gonna share, we're gonna have to use it all the time. Their answer was, they're trying to look at technology to do with nine-one-one to allow the system to give us access to the data in the community. Um, but again, this is problematic. They're telling us, and we may get it, we may not. There was another question about ambulance service. Um, local hospitals have not been notified. Every EMS is apparently supposed to wear masks, and so are the patients. And this person said, thought the case was, it was only supposed to be used with symptomatic patients. The answer was, guidance put out is based on a patient suspected to be positive. If there's a high chance, um, then you have to be protected with your PPEs, otherwise normal protocol should be provided. But again, if you don't know, the, the, you're in a hot zone, then you're gonna have to come in with all your gear. Uh, there was another question, and again, I read this by Mary Jo. The town clerk in this particular town said they have folks that had already applied for a marriage license, and they're only good for a certain amount of days, and something, they put forward to extend the marriage license so people don't have to reapply and repay. Uh, so the answer was, they're gonna look into this. Um, let's see, what else is pertinent to us? Um, oh, somebody asked the guidance on what to do in the emergency quarter seventeen, which by the way, I should've sent that out to all department heads, so that you could see exactly what that order is. And the question was, what is the right balance between going out for walks and exercise and overdoing the stay-at-home order? And the answer was, public gathering places are closed, but it's still okay to walk some trails or around your town for exercise, as long as you're following social distancing, as well as hygiene and the processes. Reminding us that beaches are closed, um, concerns with public parks and public bathrooms, so please avoid these. Use your discretion when possible, and the public should not be concerned about getting pulled aside or pulled over to see where they are going, but please follow guidance. This is unless there has been a quarantine order under this particular order. And again, the police department has been fully briefed on, you know, how they're handling things. Um, another one said, uh, they've had the opportunity to use destination determination on five occasions, and could the chief put together guidance for the public, so that they know what's going on? So earlier, I talked about if the public wanted to be transported, but they didn't meet the criteria, they could be told no. So this person is requesting that guidance go out to the public. So the public understands, if you don't meet a certain criteria, understand what you're gonna be told. So they did say that they would look into that. Um, let's see. Do something together on EMS. No, uh, talk about homeless quarantine information. They're gonna get that out to us tomorrow. Um, somebody wanted it specifically before Monday, so they said they're gonna, um, we can call Perry Plumber Direct. We have to wait until Monday. Um, protected, uh, preventing unprotected exposure. Somebody said, can you use, um, construction-grade suits, like rain gear that, uh, you know, construction people might wear, and then wash them to use them afterwards? And the guidance from CDC said, as long as they're fluid resistant, so the food, the suit can be wiped down or sprayed down, that they didn't see a problem in using them. And let's see, that about it. Um, let's see. Uh, that's not pertinent to us. Um, one last question, I don't think it pertains to us. So somebody talked about social distancing and the use of laundromats, um, and that a laundromat actually could spread this if they're not using only hot water. So the local liaison said they're gonna check into that. And then on Tuesday, just so that you know, um, the pertinent people, police, fire, selectmen, there's gonna be another legal call on Tuesday, probably at one o'clock, again, and I'll get you that number by Monday when they give it out. And I think that's it for the two calls.
All right, thank you, Trish. That's a lot, a lot has changed in, uh, four years.
Yep.
Um, so the, you know, this is the name of the game right now, is, is, uh, change is the, the only consistency, right? So.
Right.
Um, the, I would say, just real quick, Chief Jewitt, you, you guys, how are you handling this in terms of, uh, once midnight hits, your people aren't gonna, gonna stop anybody unless they, you need to stop them for another reason, right? Is what I would think.
Yeah, uh, can you be correct on that? Um, basically, the guidance they gave us is, you know, business as, as usual as it can be. Uh, they gave us some guidelines on what they would like to see, and basically what it is, it's gonna be a educational, um, piece, um, rather than enforcement piece. Uh, we do have the order to enforce, uh, but it's more of an education piece at this time. They gave us, uh, thirty-two page guideline on that.
Like reading. The, um, the other thing I, I take from the essentials list that I, that I read, everybody on this call is essential, right?
Yes.
Did every, did everybody get that?
Yep.
All that means, I think, is that if we needed to get something done and we had to go to town hall or another building to do it, we could, but that doesn't mean we're all gonna, you know, you know, have to get together. I, I think this phone calls are fine for now, but just so we know, like, 'cause I know Diane brought up the manifest, we're gonna go in there to sign it, so. Um, so Chief Jewitt cannot arrest us for that. He can find another reason to arrest us, but. All right, the, um, one I hope we can just tackle really quickly at the board is Chief Elcadino called me, because they are, you know, I'll keep it in summary form, but Chief, tell me if I got something wrong, but he basically wants to establish something that's coming across as a best practice with the other chiefs in the area, and basically taking temperatures on duty guys before they come in the station. So if somebody were to come into the station, uh, for their duty, so scheduled duty time, they get, they get their temperature taken, and they fail, and they have to be sent home, basically, to self-quarantine. What does the board wanna do about payment for that shift? So Chief Elcadino, did I miss anything there?
Uh, no, no, you did not, sir.
Okay. So what is the board thinking?
Matt, I would think we'd have to follow the same procedure that we're, we're following.
Probably.
Didn't Nancy mention that will be covered by Primax? Or am I wrong?
Maybe. I forgot what maybe was that.
Yeah, it's, it's a, it's a really, it's a really good maybe at this point, but, but what I'm talking about more so is they're showing up to punch in, if you will, for the shift tonight, and they get sent home, or we write them a check for the, whatever it was, eight hours that they, they would have to work, so. I, I guess, I guess we could have to fill out their time card under COVID, right? For tonight, for example. And then the rest, we're gonna have to deal with Prime and COVID.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And certainly encourage them to take their, they should all be taking their temperatures, so they stay safe anyway at this point.
Yeah, right, right. So, so, uh.
Matt, Matt, would that be a bit, uh, a temperature, a temperature before that shift, and then after the shift, in case they go out?
I think that's what you're doing, Chief, right?
It depended on the length of the shift. Uh, twenty-four hour shift are doing it in, uh, I believe, when you say walk, oh, I have to reread it when you walk through the door, and then twelve hours later, have to shift. They're not doing it when they exit the building.
Okay.
So twelve hours apart, it sounds?
Your hand's shaking.
I was just saying, so it sounds like they're, they're getting a, a temperature that is twelve hours apart?
Uh, I do believe so, on a twenty-four hour shift. It depended on the length of the shift.
Okay.
We have nobody doing twenty-four hour shifts.
Over twelve, okay. Yeah, it's really important that they stay safe.
So Chief, I think your answer is that if you're gonna send them home, we're gonna, we're gonna take care of it, I think, is your answer.
Not, not a problem. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Can I add a question, please?
Go ahead, Nancy.
Um, if they do go home, is it just gonna be for that one day, or is this gonna be a workers complaint?
Well, I think it all depends on, it's multi-factor, right? Because they don't work for us full-time. So they're gonna, they're probably going to need to put in a claim for their other job.
Oh, okay.
I think, I think like Charlie said, we're kind of trying to stay in line with what we talked about before.
Okay.
But it's, we're filing paperwork, I think. We just don't know who's gonna have to pay it, but.
Matt, what's the best?
What's that?
What is the temp they're going to be?
I think it's a best practice, Chief, right? What was the temp that you had?
One hundred point four. Which is a really good station, too. Um, that's, um, um, so that's, that's in line. We're not making up our own book here. This is what other chiefs are doing and telling us, just so everybody knows.
Um, all right, Diane, um, somebody saying something?
That was Kate here. I know when we were on with Mike Patero, he, um, excuse me, road agent, I mean, everything is changing rapidly, but the idea that we have several, start thinking about several scenarios from best case to worst case, so we are prepared. And in every, in worst case, the most important thing we can do is keep our fire, our, and police healthy.
Right.
So I think that really needs to be our priority for our town. We will do very well if, uh, we keep this going. And just what Trish was saying, um, I know about some churches meeting to meet. Is there any feedback we know of of these issues in Newton? Did I, did I miss something, or so far, so good? Has anyone heard?
I haven't heard anything, Kate.
So I can tell you the cap. I, I can tell you the cap of church is not currently meeting.
Very sensible, good. Thank you.
And I'm told I'm still going to heaven, but we'll, we'll see.
We'll see.
Things change. So Diane, on your list, what did you have?
I didn't have anything today.
Okay, good. So there's no open actions.
Nope.
Any new actions we need to take stock of?
I guess that's a no.
So nothing right now. So I would like to propose something to the board. I would like that, beginning with this, we start to come up with some ways to commit random acts of kindness. And what I mean by that, or the first thing I would propose, is I'd like the board to buy lunch for the transfer station tomorrow. buy lunch for the transfer station tomorrow.
Okay, how, deliver, like, what, what?
We would deliver. That would be fantastic. Okay, so that's Pete, so, so Pete, can you work with Nancy? Right. Can, can you work with Nancy on getting that paid for and maybe you can get the, you can pick the place, get it delivered, Nancy can pay with her credit card over the phone?
Absolutely.
I, I can do that, Pete.
All right, so let's, uh, go ahead, Kate.
I just like a check-in from Pete, how, if he has, they have the right equipment there and are comfortable and it's going well, how's it going?
Uh, we do have all the equipment we need, um, really been no snacks, couple of irritated people, but that's, uh...
Okay, good, thank you.
But Jack's like that all the time, right?
Yeah, yeah, I, I wasn't even talking about the rest, that's just Jack.
So, so, uh, so we need a number here, uh, what, what is, uh, logical to buy, whatever you're gonna get, pizza or sandwiches or, like, forty bucks at the most?
Yeah, at most, because, uh, I think I only have four guys tomorrow.
What are you on, Sunday for guys?
Uh, Sunday, I believe, is three.
Okay, so optimal would be Saturday for lunch, for lunch?
Yeah, definitely.
Okay. So can somebody make a motion not to exceed, uh, forty bucks to do this?
I would move to authorize the expenditure of, no more than forty dollars to be, for lunch as the transfer season on Saturday.
I'll second it. Charlie's the second, all in favor? All right. Good, thank you very much on behalf of the transfer station guys as well, thank you.
Thank you.
Exactly, make sure those guys understand this is our small token of thanks, 'cause they, they're getting, uh, you know, who would've thought that they would be put in this position, but everybody's stepping up, so. Um, okay, and like I said, random acts of kindness, we can, uh, this is just the start, but we need, the longer this goes on, we need to find opportunities to thank these people we're putting out there, um, to work, so we'll, we'll figure out something. Uh, anybody has some ideas, share them as we go along here, but we'll, uh...
Yeah, let me know, if someone can't get aid, let me know.
Was that Kate?
Kate.
That was Kate, yes.
Kate has Kate.
So, okay, so any, anything else for this meeting? All right, well, once again, thanks to everybody for what you're doing, thanks for, uh, jumping on this call on a Friday night, but as I like to say jokingly, it's not like people have to go to the movies, um, on Friday night and go out to dinner, so it's... So I'm, uh, um, I would seek a motion to adjourn from somebody.
Okay.
So I was at six thirty-two, was there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
All right, thanks, everybody. Again, like I said last week, my, my phone's on all weekend, uh, most everybody has the number, um, so give me a call if anybody's got any problems, but everybody have a nice weekend.
Thank you.
Have a good weekend.
Thank you.
Bye. See you guys, bye.